Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
It's Tuesday, the fourteenth. Welcome to Temecula City Council Meeting. We do go out live, so everybody at home, howdy from downtown Temecula. I wanted to thank our Voices of the Valley Choir for the prelude music. Where are you, young folks? There you are. What beautiful music, and we thank you for being here this evening. All right, we're going to start our meeting with an invocation. Is Pastor Christopher McPike here of Calvary Chapel, Temecula Valley? Oh, he is. Well, we go to our tried and trusty city manager for the invocation. And will you remain standing for the flag salute given by Councilmember Ron this evening? Please stand.
Would you please stand and bow your head? Dearly, Father, Lord, we just give you thanks for this day. We give you thanks for the city of Temecula and all that it stands for. We give you glory and honor for the people that live here, for the democracy, the business of the city that we get to take part in this evening. Pray for wisdom and discernment for the city council. Pray for the city staff. Lord, I pray that you'd have your hand on all of our first responders, our police and fire. You continue to care for them, guide them. We thank you for this opportunity, and we give you all the glory and all the honor. In Jesus' name, amen.
All right, join with me in saying the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless you. You can be seated. Madam City Clerk, I sit up here with some distinguished colleagues. If you can call the roll.
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Ron?
Here.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Mayor Nigar?
And the mayor is here. This is the time, actually, before we get into presentations and proclamations, always like to acknowledge our students. Where are the golden bears tonight? Golden bears, are you in the house? All right. How about the wolf pack? Do we have any wolf pack here?
There's a fan back there.
Okay, all right, one wolf pack. All righty, how about pumas? All right, we got some pumas in the house. All right, really, really good. I know you have to stay here till eight. Somebody will meet you at the back door, they'll give you your slip, and at the same time, we also have a pocket constitution for you, so you'll get that as just our little token of being here for your government class. Now's the time for presentations and proclamations. May is Mental Health Month. Is Dr. Walter Hessler here? Doctor, you join us here almost every year, don't you?
Yeah.
Yeah. Come on up to the podium. And Mayor Pro Tem Stewart is going to read a proclamation.
Okay, whereas mental illness can affect anyone regardless of age, background, employment, education, and income level, with those who are very, who are very young and seniors among the most vulnerable, and whereas the National Alliance of Mental Illness reports that one in five American adults experience mental illness in any given year. Uh, wait, wait, no, no. Experience mental illness, uh, in, yeah, in a given year. One in five youth aged thirteen to eighteen experience severe mental disorder at some point during their life, and more than two million Americans aged sixty-five and older experience some form of depression. Whereas there are treatment services and community support systems that are helping many with mental illness conditions recover and be able to move forward with rich, fulfilling, productive lives, whereas friends and family and community members play an important role in extending understanding and compassion about mental health and in promoting the wellness and recovery of people with mental, living with mental illness. Therefore, I, Michael S. Nigar, on behalf of the city of Temecula, proclaim Mental Health Month, May, this day, May 2019.
Congratulations, Doc. What do you have to say?
I'm Walter Hessler. I'm a retired psychiatrist. I am appointed by the Board of Supervisors to represent District One with the Commission. And I thank you very much for your participation in Mayor's Mental Health Month. It's an important thing to acknowledge and to reach out to those in need. I think it's one of those things that people don't really think about until it affects them or their family. We, there's an annual event, Mayor's Mental Health Month Event at Fairmount Park in Riverside. This year, it is a week from Thursday, May twenty-third, from twelve to four. I have some flyers here. I will leave with the city clerk. People would like to go. I encourage everyone to go. It could be an awkward time for working people, twelve to four, but free food and drink, entertainments, children's activities, free health screenings, booths from every clinic and entity of the Behavioral Health Department will be there. They'll have representatives. Temecula, for the first time, we have our own Mayor's Mental Health Month Event, which is a week from today, the twenty-first, same hours, twelve to four, and it's on County Center Drive, just off Inez, right near the Melman Library. Also, twelve to four, it's on a smaller scale, but I don't know if everyone knows this, but Temecula has programs for adults, older adults, children, and those with substance abuse. And they're all kind of clustered up here in that part of town. I encourage everyone to go. There also is food and drink and entertainment. I would think, without putting anyone on the spot, I would think that the mayor and city council would benefit from going to see, talk to the people who offer these services and see, see yourself just what's available. There's flyers for this also in English and Spanish, and I will leave them. I want to say one, one thing. There's a lot to say about the importance of treating melanoma and substance abuse, and the numbers that were just read off to me certainly drive that home if we didn't know. Any, any family of any size is probably touched by, by it in one way or the other. And each year, I know that our department has more funding, more staff, more programs, and yet, unfortunately, somewhat surprisingly, the Centers for Disease Control last year came out with a report, I don't know if you're familiar with it, that from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand seventeen, the suicide rate in the United States has gone up about thirty-three percent. And it's not like it jumps up and down with the economy or we're at war, or anything. It's sort of, to me, kind of ominous, stepwise increase. And if you look online, you can see this easily online, the international rates actually have come down during that period. So I think there are toxic elements in our, in our society. The demographics have changed a little bit. There are more young people. It still is a majority of older white people, that's pretty much who commit suicide, but with lots of exceptions, lots of exceptions.
So, Doctor, just quickly to sum up, would you say mental health encompasses the, let's say, the opioid epidemic across the United States? Would that be a fair statement, that mental health trouble has something to do with that?
Well, I think that, I don't know just how coroners...
Just your opinion.
...their determinations, but I think actually those rates are, are low because of this, because I think opioid, heroin, and prescription opioid deaths are generally reported as accidental. And I know, I've, I've worked with patients, including patients in prisons, and I know that some of that is not accidental. I mean, I mean, if, if there's a note, if there's obvious behavior before the overdose, you might call it suicide, but I think a lot of things, a lot of them are unrecognized suicide.
And do you think there's a...
And the crossover, the overlap between substance abusers and the mentally ill is very high, so to tease out which is which is, I don't know, it's a daunting task.
And also, you feel there's a correlation between prescriptions for antidepressants and anti-anxiety, the proliferation of those related to the suicide rate?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, do you find that there's an increase in that?
I'm sorry?
Do you find that there's an increase in the use?
In the use of antidepressants?
Yes.
I don't know.
Okay.
I, I do, I will say because of the way health insurance is structured with managed care organizations and HMOs, they, they, I, this is a little bit of, from me personally here, an opinion, but I think more and more primary care physicians end up being in the position of prescribing medication for psychiatric disorders than psychiatrists do, because they, they don't really want to refer to specialists. They try, primary care physicians and the physician's assistants who work with them are doing more of the prescribing now.
Got it.
I think they're also getting more training in it, and, and I'm not saying they don't do a good job, but I think psychiatrists are more now kind of secondary thought for, for the tougher cases or work with, for public entities.
Well, Doc, I want to thank you for coming. Thank you for your efforts with mental health. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Our next presentation will, will be a proclamation for Voices for Children, CASA Volunteer Day. Jessica Munoz here? Hi there, Jessica. Come on down. Looks like you got your posse with you.
Okay, the month of May is recognized as National Foster Care Month in the United States. The observance of National Foster Care Month is a special opportunity to celebrate community members who actively support the well-being of children living in foster care. Each year, there are thousands of abused and abandoned and neglected children living in foster care in Riverside County. Voices for Children was founded in nineteen eighty and is committed to be the, to the belief that every child in foster care deserves a safe, caring, permanent home, and Voices for Children assumed the responsibility for CASA services in Riverside County at the request of the Superior Court of California, of Riverside County, and the Judicial Council in California in November two thousand fourteen. Voices for Children, Voices for Children's Court Appointed Special Advocate, CASA, volunteers advocate in courts, schools, and community for the best interests of the children in foster care, and are exemplary role models and volunteer mentors for abused, neglected, and abandoned children living in the Temecula, living in Temecula. Voices for Children volunteers provided more than thirty-two thousand five hundred hours of service since the program was inceptioned in two thousand fifteen. They served over three hundred and fifty children, six here in Temecula just last year. Their overarching goal is to ultimately provide CASA volunteer for every foster child. The city of Temecula commends Voices for Children volunteers for their outstanding dedication and commitment to our city's children during National Foster Care Month and throughout the year. Therefore, I, Michael S. Nigar, on behalf of the city of Temecula, hereby proclaim May fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, Voices for Children CASA Volunteer Day.
Jessica, good evening.
Good evening. On behalf of Voices for Children, we want to thank the mayor and city council for this recognition. Voices for Children is the court-appointed special advocate or CASA program for Riverside County. That means that we have the unique responsibility of being the only nonprofit organization in the county with an agreement with the court to be able to recruit and train and support very special volunteers, like the wonderful young ladies standing behind me, who advocate on behalf of children in foster care. A natural question is why do children in foster care need advocacy? Of course, children in foster care have dedicated social workers, attorneys, and capable judges who are making life-changing decisions about every aspect of their health and well-being. Unfortunately, all of these professionals face a common challenge. They have large, unwieldy caseloads and are faced with making these critical decisions about many children at once and often very quickly. So our volunteers, including the women standing behind me, get to know their children on a one-on-one basis, visit them every month, learn about what makes the child wish and hope and want and dream, and share that information with the social workers, the judges, and others who are making decisions, and as a result, are able to advocate for their best interests and hopefully the best future possible for these children. We're so excited that more than twenty people in Temecula are volunteer advocates with us right now, and as grateful as we are to have these volunteer advocates, we always need more. So while I mostly want to say thank you, I'd be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity for a shameless plug, which is to say that if there is a community member out there who is interested in volunteering with us and learning more about how they can support a child in foster care, they can go to our website, speakupnow.org. We hold monthly information sessions in Temecula so that residents can get to know us a little bit better. Thank you so much.
Jessica, thank you for being here. Can you introduce who you have with you here today?
Absolutely. I'm, I'm so happy to be joined by Lynn Harris and Robin Wesley.
And thank you. And you know, I really appreciate the work you do. A lot of people, it's really not on their radar screen, but the difference you can make in a young person's life could be the difference between them succeeding, going on to college, or them going to jail.
That's right.
And, and, and that's really a fact. And so, it wasn't a shameless plug. It was an encouragement for other people to get involved in what you ladies are doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. All righty, moving through the presentations, it is Bike Month. Mr. Gary Adi from our Community Services Commission. Come on down, Gary.
Whereas the bicycle is an economical, healthy, convenient, and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent tool for recreation and enjoyment of Temecula's scenic beauty, and throughout the month of May, the residents of Temecula and its visitors will experience the joys of bicycling throughout organized rides, bike trains, commuting events, or by simply just getting out and going for a ride. Temecula, Temecula's bike lanes and trail system attract bicycles each year, providing economic health, transportation, tourism, and scenic benefits, and creating a bicycle-friendly community has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, growing the economy of Temecula, improving the safety, traffic safety, and reducing pollution and congestion. Hike Bike Temecula, the Bike Shop, Temecula Bicycle Coalition, Inland Empire Biking Alliance, Inland Valley Mountain Bike Association, League of American Bicyclists, and other organizations and businesses will be promoting bicycling during the month of May two thousand nineteen. These groups are also promoting bicycle tourism year-round to attract more visitors, to enjoy the local restaurants, hotels, retail establishments, and cul, and culture and scenic attractions, and these groups are also promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce collisions, injuries, and fatalities, and improve health and safety for everyone on the road. Mayor Nigar, on behalf of the city of Temecula, proclaim May two thousand nineteen Bike Month.
It's, it's an honor for me to accept this proclamation on behalf of our community. First of all, Mayor Nigar, the council, your support over the years for biking and making Temecula a viable community, for also other forms of alternative transportation is, is really very, very appreciated. We're on the, the precipice right now of becoming a real bike town and doing a lot of the things that are in this proclamation, making this a destination. It's already a bike destination for many bike riders all over the world. There's some great places to ride here, there's fantastic weather. The next step is making our alternative transportation, biking here in Temecula, safe and stress-free, and that's something that is going to help contribute to our traffic's issues. Tomorrow, May fifteenth, is Bike to Work Day, and I encourage everybody to get that old bike dusted off and, and ride it to work, and get, get a car off of the road every time you do that. A lot of the things that Councilmember Stewart was saying regarding enjoying the beauty of Temecula, I most definitely, when I get on my bike and take my time, am able to do that and really appreciate what we have here in this wonderful community. Lastly, I have recently been blessed with a, an appointment to serve on our Community Service Commission, and what it's allowed, allowed me to do is really see the support that we get from city staff over the years, Matt Peters and all of his work on the, on the trail system here in Temecula and biking, and I've also, you know, been fortunate to see our own department in community service, you know, with, with Director Hawkins and also Director Watkins and Director Thomas with their passion and efforts to get the infrastructure built. So I look forward to the, the great things we have coming with infrastructure here in Temecula and really making this a bike town that stands out in the United States.
Gary, thank you, and thank you for coming up and taking the award. Your appointment to the Community Service Commission was because of your rich history of serving the community and your, your desire in the past and now moving forward of having participated in these type of events. I will say a couple of things to support your bike proclamation. First, Matt Peters, wave your hand there, Matt. Okay, there you go. He likes to stay under the radar, does a fantastic job working on that Bike Master Plan. There's going to be some goodies in our budget that have to do with biking, some undercrossings and some new trails. It's going to be pretty awesome, and I just encourage everybody to tune in, and it's going to be pretty neat. But I love your goal about being able to bike around the entire town, and that's a good one, so congratulations and thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, Miss Annette Brown, California Tourism Month. Hi, Annette. Come on down with your best tourism, tour guide voice, okay? Mr. Stewart.
All right. Travel has a positive effect on Temecula, the nation's economic prosperity and image abroad, and travel impacts business productivity and individual travelers' well-being, and travel to within California provides significant economic benefits for the state, generating, generating nearly one trillion spent directly by travelers, and the travel is among the largest private sector employer in the United States, generating fifteen point seven million jobs in two thousand eighteen, including eight point nine million directly in the travel industry and six point eight in other industries, and travelers spending directly generated tax revenues of six hundred and sixty-five million for the state and local governments, funds used to support essential services and programs. Temecula generated seven hundred, seven hundred and twenty-four million in travel spending and directly generated tax revenues of twenty-two point one million dollars for the state and eight point three million dollars for local taxes, with two point seven million visitors, one point five million overnight stays, and more than seventy-five hundred tourism jobs. International travel to California is the state's number one services export, and meeting the, and meetings, events, and incentive travel are the core business and function that help companies strengthen business performance, educate employees and customers, and reward business accomplishment, which boosts the U.S. economy. In two thousand eighteen, domestic and international business travelers spent three hundred and twen, uh, three hundred and twenty-seven billion in leisure travel, and leisure travel, and which accounts for more than three quarters of all the trips taken in California, spurs countless benefits to travelers' health, wellness, creativity, cultural awareness, education, happiness, productivity, and relationships. And travel is a pillar of the economy, creating jobs at a faster rate than any other sector. Welcoming visitors from near and far always has been and always will be the enduring ethos of the Temecula Valley. Mayor Nigar, on behalf of the city of Temecula, City Council of the city of Temecula, hereby proclaim May California Tourism Month.
Mr. Mayor, City Council Members, my name's Scott Wilson. I'm the chairman of the Board for Visit Temecula Valley, and I'm here to say thank you for supporting tourism. As Councilman Stewart pointed out, tourism impact in Temecula Valley has now surpassed over seven hundred and twenty-four million dollars and provides more than seventy-five hundred local jobs. I mean, that's really huge for our area. We believe working together as a community to enhance our residents' quality of life and provide amenities of a world-class destination has helped us to be recognized by Wine Enthusiast, Wine Enthusiast Magazine as one of the top ten wine travel destinations in the world. Huge accomplishment for all of us. Tourism benefits all Californians: more jobs, more spending, and more tax revenue. Temecula's tourism industry has generated thirty point three million dollars in local and state taxes. A large portion of visitor tax revenue goes to city and county budgets, allowing local government to invest in infrastructure, improvements, public safety resources, and the quality of life for its residents. Just as a reference, our local taxpayers would each have to pay an additional eight hundred and ninety dollars per household to cover the amount raised from tourism. So again, thank you for all your support in tourism, we really appreciate it.
Thank you for being here tonight, and you know, when this, we're celebrating our thirty years of cityhood this year, and I believe when we incorporated, we never intended to become a tourism community, but we found our niche, and it's been very productive, as you said, providing lots of jobs, lots of entertainment opportunities, and a beautiful place to live as well. So thanks for all you folks do to promote tourism.
Thank you, and thank you for your support.
Okay, and our last presentation for the evening is National Public Works Week. Mr. Thomas, are you here?
All right. Public work professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital, of vital importance to sustainability and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Temecula. These infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals, who are the engineers, managers, employees at all levels of government, and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. It is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Temecula to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest in understanding of the importance of public works and the public works program in their respective communities. The quality of the effectiveness of these services, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of the public works person. personnel. Mr. Mayor, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Temecula, we declare this National Public Works Week starts here.
On behalf of all the city's public works employees, I'd like to thank the mayor and council for recognizing National Public Works Week, which is actually next week, and this is the 59th Annual National Public Works Week, which is sponsored by our American Public Works Association, and I know the council is well aware of this, but I've got a quick little video that was produced by American Public Works Association that'll give the rest of the folks in the chambers an idea of what public works does in the city. So if we could queue up the video?
We are the ones that turn dreams into reality. Our focus on leadership, professional development, and our ability to actually deliver and maintain real community improvements makes us both the dreamers and the doers.
Advancing quality of life for all, that's a big story.
To keep our communities safe and strong and resilient.
There's something powerful about giving back with consistency, with passion, with balance.
Working together, we build lasting wealth and prosperity within our communities.
There's imagination behind making our communities thrive. But it doesn't magically appear. From our clean water, to complex infrastructure, to creating the public spaces where our communities gather every day. Our first responders, heroes, first on the scene, last to leave. It's with determination, commitment, and passion where the men and women of public works create a better quality of life for all, the dreamers and doers. Together, the strength of our communities, united by association, over 30,000 strong, advancing the quality of life for every moment of every day. Public Works: Imagining Tomorrow, Today.
That's it, so thank you again.
Pat, first, thank you for sharing on behalf of all cities, but also, please send the council's regards to our own public work staff. They perform tremendously. With the last rains that we had, literally, roads were washed out, people could not gain access to their homes. They worked tirelessly through the night to repave roads, recreate access, they're out there in the rain while it was occurring, and because of that, many people were able to access their homes. That was nothing short of phenomenal. I remember also, I believe it was a few years ago, I think it was Rodney Tidwell, and we were having a, the Rod Run was going on, and most of your resources were here in Old Town while it was going on, and somebody contacted me because a young man lost his skateboard in the sewer storm drain. And the normal response would have been, well, you know what, we really, it's the weekend, it's Saturday, we really can't get to it. They broke somebody away, went down the manhole cover, gave the young man back his skateboard. You just can't put a price on that. Did we have the open house yet for the traffic wall?
We did a few weeks ago, but anytime anyone would like to come, feel free to contact us, and we can arrange for individual tours.
Sounds good, and if you ever want to see something just totally amazing, there's a wall about that big, that curvature big, with traffic cameras around the city and controls that are operated every day, morning and the evening, to make sure traffic flows through certain streetlights as best as it can. So there's a lot of things you guys do in the background, particularly here in Temecula, including filling potholes, and we appreciate it, thank you.
Well, I appreciate that as well, and I will pass on all your comments to all of our employees.
Thank you. Okay, it was a heavy presentation week, but all of the presentations were worthwhile. Now's the time for public comments. Madam City Clerk, do we have a video?
We do, Mr. Mayor, we have a video.
Okay, here are the rules.
A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the council addressing public comments in the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing that item. On those items, each speaker is limited to five minutes.
Ladies and gentlemen, those are the rules, and it came directly from the chief of police, okay? All right. Madam City Clerk, how many speakers do we have?
Mr. Mayor, we have 24 speakers on public comments, non-agenda items.
Okay, sounds good, so we're gonna call public comments, and we'll cut it off right there. I have a suspicion that there's a lot of speakers on a topic that was covered at our last council meeting, so I'm gonna say some of the same things I said at the last council meeting, 'cause I think it will help move things along. I'm gonna ask everybody to refrain from clapping. If you agree with the, if you agree with the speaker, just raise your hand. That's respectful, and it also sends a message to the council. It's important to also note that if it is what I'm thinking it is, having to do with a resolution we entertained at our last council meeting about three weeks ago, that item's not on the agenda tonight. So while we're going to listen intently, no action can be taken on that item, but I can assure you, you'll have the council's 100% attention. So with that, let's call the first speaker.
Mr. Mayor, the first speaker is Patrice Lines, to be followed by George Rombach.
And just a reminder, you have three minutes. Good evening, Ms. Lines.
Good evening, good to see all of you. I'm here tonight to ask you to put this on the next agenda. This was your resolution, I really liked it, thank you for writing it, and I don't think that you heard the full city. You need to re, put it re-on the agenda again and let us listen, and let us speak to you about it, because the Constitution is the supreme law of the land, and there is a distinct and diametrically opposed difference between socialism and our Constitution. So I, I'm asking that you do that, thank you. And if you could, I know you just said you can't speak to that issue tonight, but can't you consider putting it on the agenda tonight?
It would not be appropriate, it's not on the agenda tonight.
I mean, not tonight, for next time.
It's not something that we can address for tonight.
Okay.
So it's a good question, but I just want to make that clear, it's not something we can address for tonight.
Thank you.
You're very welcome, thanks for coming tonight. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is George Rombach, to be followed by Rick Rice.
George, we haven't seen you in a while.
That you have, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I apologize I was not here last time to defend your proposed resolution. The resolution, as I read it, it really merely memorialized the laws upon which this city was founded, as a general law city, and under the Constitution of the Republic of California, which is even cited on our banner. We are to follow the Constitution of California and the regulations of the state, which incorporate some of the provisions of the U.S. Constitution, which also, the U.S. is a republic, as we cited in our Fledge of Allegiance. But in particular, Section Four, question, Article Four, Section Four cites that the United States shall guarantee to every state of this union a republican form of government, and it goes on to talk about defense from invasion and the like. But clearly, in the Constitution, it dictates that the U.S. government will see that a republican form of government is held in each state, which also incorporates Article One, Section Eight. Of the 16 specifically enumerated powers, there's not one of those powers that are cited in the U.S. Constitution which authorize the conversion to a socialist state. The last provision in Article One, Section Eight, which is often misclaimed by those who promote such things, is that to make all laws which shall be necessary and proper for the carrying out into execution the foregoing powers and all the powers vested in the Constitution of the government of the United States and the departments and officers thereof. That is a catch-all, if you want, for stuffing things in, but it clearly states those things of the preceding enumerated powers. There's nothing in Article One, Section Eight, which authorizes them to convert, authorize the government or anyone else to convert us into a socialist government. I see your resolution as merely memorializing the laws that took place, not took place, govern the setting of the city of Temecula. And I think it was inappropriate and inaccurate aspects that police departments and fire patrols, the army, the military, are socialist bodies, they are merely services.
And at that, Mr. Rombach, I have to cut you off, 'cause your time's done.
Thank you again.
Thank you for being here. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Rick Reese, to be followed by Louis Reyes.
Again, hands are the best. Rick Reese, good eve, good evening, good evening to you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and good evening to the distinguished city council. I wanna, I wanna start out by, with a quote from Mark Twain, he says, "A lie can travel halfway around the world while the truth is putting on its shoes," and I think that's what happened at last city council meeting. And I am here, I do support Resolution Number 19. I think some things could be reworded, reworked, but I'm here because my natural freedoms divinely gifted to me. They're not up for negotiation, they're not for bargaining, and they're certainly not to be sacrificed on some politically correct altar of social justice or some kind of idea of social utopia. 30 years ago, I served in the U.S. Navy, and I did many deployments, a lot of times we were shadowing the Soviet fleet and Soviet submarines, and so I stood then against that kind of totalitarianism, and I'm willing to do the same thing right now, this is my red line. I think socialism has diametrically opposed our U.S. Constitution. Our U.S. Constitution is there to cherish, to protect, and to promote individual rights. All these are seen, Mr. Rombach stated earlier about the four, the, the, the Article Four, which guarantees a republican form of government, but we also have amendments, like the First Amendment, the Fourth Amendment, and the Fifth Amendment, that both protects and enshrines our rights to freedom of speech, freedom of association, and private property rights. All of this is the hallmark of what we have, which is called, some people call it capitalism, as if it were a slur, but I prefer to call it free enterprise or economic freedom, because that's exactly what it is, and that's what's made our country as great as it is. I think it's important to note real quickly that the Union of Soviet Socialist Republics, the Nazi Party, the Nazi Party stands for National Socialist German Workers' Party. Benito Mussolini was a former socialist, he created fascism, the reason he did it was because socialism was taking too long. And this is one of his quotes, the father of fascism, "Everything in the state, nothing outside the state, nothing against the state. Communism and fascism are two sides to the same totalitarian coin. Both totalitarian ideologies utilize socialism as a tool for repression and coercion against our citizens." And so that's why we need to take a stand against this.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Louis Reyes, to be followed by Raoul Rodriguez.
Mr. Reyes, good evening, sir.
How are you, sir?
I'm good today, thanks for asking.
I see Stewart's still here, and Mr. Rombach. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. As we all know, I was here last month. We confused Mary Ann Edwards about laughing about me, and she said she was laughing at someone behind me. I thought that was rather odd, but what I came here tonight to, I'm not gonna razzle-dazzle you with all kinds of terms and nice things to say, what I came here to say is the city council of Temecula, and it's known all over the state and in other states, that you folks cowered to the pressure that was placed on you by the socialist slash communist. I am shocked, and you cannot imagine that some of the communications I've received about that. I thought Temecula was a lot different. Been here 20, close to 20 years, and I'm appalled at how the city council, certain members now, sir, I'm not blaming every one of you, I think Mayor Nigar, you represented yourself very respectfully, sir, and your knowledge of the Constitution was, I really enjoyed listening to it. But there's certain people here on the councilmen that they just sat there and cowered, you could see their faces, they were afraid of these people that were razzle-dazzling them and coming up with all these fancy quotes and saying, "Let me tell you something, bottom line, it's the Constitution. The Constitution trumps socialism, bottom line, and we need to go by that, and you need to implement that resolution, and let us vote on it. If you can't get it done, we can get it done, because this is a constitutional republic, and you work for us, every one of you. You work for the people, don't shoot yourself in the foot, I can see it coming. The people of Temecula and the surrounding will not put up with it." And I'm sure that you folks have received several emails regarding this, and I hope you share that information with you, with us, with the people. And so I would say, I'm for the resolution, put it back on the agenda, let us come out, and let us see you pass that resolution, because it's really, there's nothing else to do. That's the right thing to do. This is a democracy, a republic, so I hope you do the right thing. I don't want to be, I don't want to listen to people shaming us and shameful things that you guys have done. You didn't hold up your oath, it's your duty to protect your oath to the Constitution. I don't know how you let that get by, and I'm so appalled at, I know which one of you, and the people, I know exactly what you said, I wish I'd have never been here, I wish I'd have never done this, and I know who cowered.
Mr. Reyes?
Yes, sir.
As much as I like hearing you, your time's out.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
You're very welcome.
Appreciate it.
Right.
The next speaker is Raoul Rodriguez, to be followed by Robin Hudson.
Mr. Rodriguez, good evening, sir.
As you can see, my sign says, "Capitalism made America great." The flip side is just the opposite. Capitalism will never work in America. Will never work in America, okay? Here's the other side. Anyway, the point I'm making here is that we're asking that you bring this up for vote again, so that we can voice our opinions and that you can do the right thing. Here's a sign that I'd like for you to read. Stop, look, and listen to your heart and your conscience, because you took an oath... Because you took an oath. Every one of you took an oath to stand for the Constitution and the right thing. So do the right thing, bring this up again, so that we can voice our opinions again, and even if you have opposition, you need to do the right thing, which is stand up for the Constitution, the oath that you took. We want you to vote yes on Resolution Nineteen. It's important that you stand up for the Constitution. You know, we live in a wonderful country. We have the right to voice our opinions, which is what we're doing tonight. No other country gives us, gives people that right. Look what's happening in Venezuela. They are, I mean, they just don't have the food, they're fighting, you have a dictator that wants to stay in power. Something needs to be done. We don't want that to happen here in, in this city or in, in America. Okay? So, thank you for listening to me. God bless America. God bless our President Donald Trump, because he's doing a terrific job. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez.
The next speaker is Robin Hudson, to be followed by Liam O'Mara.
Ms. Hudson, good evening to you.
Yes, my name is Robin Vidston, and I'm just here to echo what our other colleagues have been stating. This resolution is just a common sense approach to the Constitution. With a Webster dictionary definition of socialism mentioned, which clearly demonstrates that our Constitution is at odds with socialism. It also referenced how capitalism could have been blamed for the Great Depression, but on the other hand, pulled us out. That was a great reference to a piece of our history. As our other speakers have said, we're asking you to bring the resolution forward at the next City Council meeting, and let's have a vote. Let the people's voice be heard. It was disappointing that there was no vote at the previous City Council meeting. So, again, we urge you, next City Council meeting, to bring it forward, and we call for a yes vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Did I get your name right? Is it Ms. Hudson or?
Vidston.
Vidston. Vidston. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Liam O'Mara, to be followed by Ira Robinson.
Mr. O'Mara, good evening to you, sir.
Under members, tonight you're being asked to consider reintroduction of the resolution arguing that socialism is a threat to our Constitution. My name is Dr. Liam O'Mara, and I am once again speaking to the absurdity of this proposal. Let's start with the basics. Democrats are not Marxists. Any dictionary will tell you that socialism means the social ownership of the means of production. Not government ownership necessarily, this is a distinction that some would neglect here, but so, some form of social ownership. And it is simply a fact that no one who came to speak here last time was arguing for it. This resolution is aimed at unicorns and leprechauns. It is pure fantasy. What seems to be happening here is development of a slippery slope fallacy, based around a misconception that social democratic policies will lead inevitably to communist tyranny. The problem with this argument is that social democratic policies have been implemented in dozens of countries, and have never, not once, led to authoritarian communism. On the evidence, therefore, Mr. Gibbs and his ilk have no actual argument. They want to believe that Democrats are secret socialists aiming at the seizure of private possessions, which is already absurd. Or to believe that Democrats might not mean to do it, but that by pursuing social democratic policies might, you know, unleash some force of history that will inevitably end up with the government stealing your boat, which is just nonsense. While it is true that there have been authoritarian socialist experiments in the world, statism and authoritarianism are not in the essence of socialism. And nearly all socialist writers opposed the idea. Marx, Prudhomme, Bakunin, Sterner, even Lenin himself opposed state control. The key element of socialism is worker ownership. That can take the form of government control, but it is usually not the way it is conceived. If you have ever shopped in a co-op, you have seen socialism in practice. Of the people in the US arguing for actual, literal socialism, that is the form most often preached. And those who want something more akin to Stalinism, like in the Cold War here, guess what? Tankies do not vote Democrat. They generally do not vote at all. They want to vote with a gun, because authoritarian communism has only ever come about through violent revolutions. The people like myself who came to this City Council to argue against the resolution, on the contrary, did so in defense of liberty, of free speech, and of the Constitution itself. Yes, you can argue till you're blue in the face that the Constitution does not allow people to pursue a non-republican form of government, but no one was asking for that. If you want to argue with yourself, screaming in a closet somewhere, have at it. But do not for a moment allow yourself to say that Democratic voters are aiming for a socialist tyranny, or that healthcare and college tuition will somehow set up a sequence of events leading to Maoism.
Mr. O'Mara?
There is no.
On that note?
Yep.
Your time is up.
Okay. No possible connection.
Thank you for speaking tonight.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Ira Robinson, to be followed by Christine Masa.
Mr. Robinson, always a pleasure, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Member of Council.
You know, before you start, make sure you rewind his time. I actually looked at a video from 2007 the other day, and lo and behold, you were in the audience back then at the old City Hall, and I need to show that to you. And I said, "Son of a gun, I didn't know we went that, back that far."
That's, that's correct. I've been watching you guys for a long time.
Yes, I know, I know. Anyway, thank you for being here. Could you please restart his time?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is, and Members of Council, my name is Ira Robinson. I do live in Temecula. At the last meeting, I had planned to but did not address Article Four, Section Four of the Constitution. That article is often called the Guarantee Clause. In pertinent part, the section reads as follows. "The United States shall guarantee to every state in this nation a republican form of government." The question then is, were the founding fathers talking about the Democratic Party and the Republican Party when they talked about republican forms of government? The answer is clearly they weren't. Constitution was signed in 1787, went into effect in 1789, the Democratic Party came along in 1792, the Republican Party came along fifty-five years later, in 1854. So, Congress wasn't talking about the Republican Party. Article Four, Section Four, in that article, the founding fathers were not talking about economic systems like communism, socialism, or capitalism at all. They were talking about the form of government to prevail in the United States. Question they dealt with was, would it be a dictatorship? Would it be a monarchy? Would it be a hereditary aristocracy? Or would it be a democracy? That's form of government. That's what they were trying to decide. The founding fathers' answer to that question was, none of the above. They rejected dictatorship. They rejected monarchy and aristocracy because they'd had enough of the king, no more of this monarchy in this country. And they rejected democracy in its pure form. And the reason they rejected it in its pure form is because democracy in its pure form is ruled by the majority. And the fellows who put this Constitution together said, "Well, wait a minute, it doesn't protect the minority. Let's have a republican form of government. Set up a Constitution that protects the minority, so that they're not overwhelmed by the majority." That's Article Four, Section Four. Read it. Go to your Google and, and check it out. That is what you will see, is the Constitution of the United States. That's the law. Let me turn to an unhappy subject, and that is to address some comments to the Mayor and to Councilman Ron. As I see it, going back two weeks ago, the two of you put together a resolution denouncing communism and socialism, and attempted to adjust, to justify doing it by wrapping it in the Constitution of the United States. As your resolution had little if anything to do with the business of the city, and even less to do with the Constitution of the United States, I think your action was unwise, it was unnecessary, it was divisive. And I think we see the evidence of that here tonight. I believe that it was an exercise in politics, and one that should not have been allowed to see the light of day. I'm also concerned from last week's discussion about Mr. Ron's use of the Brown Act.
Mr. Robinson, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Your time is up.
All right. Thank you.
You're very welcome, sir.
The next speaker is Christine Masa, to be followed by James Horn.
Ms. Masa, good evening to you.
Good evening, Councilwoman. So, as you could guess, since you've all received emails from me at some point on this topic, that my comments are addressing the resolution formerly known as Nineteen, because I read your agenda, I see you have a new Resolution Nineteen. So, we'll put a little symbol on it, like the artist formerly known as Prince, and we'll call it the Resolution to Affirm Principles Outlined in the Constitution, which specifically calls out socialism as communism, socialism and communism as threats. Although I was not able to attend the meeting two weeks ago due to an email, a meeting of my own, I emailed all of you, and I watched the livestream, and I want to thank you all for listening to the commentary. It was a significant investment on your part, as well as the members of the community. And I want to thank you for listening to everyone who spoke, including tonight. I've been a Temecula resident for fifteen years. I'm an active member of the community. I've generally been pleased with the actions of our City Council, and I'm glad that you reached what I consider to be a sensible decision, to quote councilpersons Edwards and Ron, to let this die. Unfortunately, there are members here in the community, and perhaps even some members of the Council, who are not content to let this die, and will foster the community to partisanship that your governing body is not supposed to display. My request in this public comment, to not let yourselves be drawn into this partisan debate and divisiveness. Continue to be inclusive. Continue to consider all viable options to implement your plans without labeling. Continue to focus on local issues in your scope, issues that will unite our town instead of dividing it. There was a comment made last month, I believe, by Mayor Nigar, that we may see this resolution come back in another form. My request is your constituent, constituent, just say no. You reaffirmed your commitment to the Constitution in your oath, and that's fine with most of us. You need never, ever bring this back, ever. But if you must, please take it at its most simplistic. Reaffirm the Constitution, such as reaffirming your support of three co-equal branches of government with none having more power than another, and leave it there. There is no need to bring back any principles like socialism, communism, veganism, or any other ism not explicitly mentioned in the Constitution nor its amendments. And if you still have concerns with the Constitution, then let's bring those to our US representatives and senators, whose distinct job it is to discuss constitutional matters. Let's keep you focused on our city. You're doing a great job in that respect, and I thank you. Thank you for your time, your dialogue, and your consideration, or rather, lack of consideration, for this un-American resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Masa.
The next speaker is James Horn, to be followed by Nam Young Horn.
Mr. Horn, good evening to you, sir.
Good evening, how are you all? The beard soothes you well.
Thank you, sir.
We opened this meeting tonight with a pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. That's what we're here. I'm a veteran, I'm a retired foreign service officer. I spent twenty-five years overseas in countries that were identified by the President as some kind of a hole. A lot of them are, were socialist countries, often very autocratic. That comes with socialism. Socialism is not a utopia. There is no tolerance in socialized countries for other people. You either conform, or you face bad consequences. Disarmed citizens, and that's what socialism is about in the United States, are vulnerable to violent socialist controls. Socialist China murdered up to sixty million people. They are still killing people. The Union of Soviet Socialist Republics murdered over sixty million people. The National Socialist German Workers' Party, the Nazis, created the Holocaust and then caused the deaths of millions more. The Socialist Khmer Rouge murdered twenty percent of their own population. They started with the educated people first. They could not tolerate people who would question their reign. Cuba is socialist. Venezuela, we know what's happening there with that socialist regime. Algeria is socialist. I've lived there. I've lived in Saudi Arabia, which is socialist. Once backward socialist Burma is now a thriving democracy and a republic, and they are living much, much better. Socialist education indoctrinates people. It does not teach people. It creates mindless subjects and capable of independent thought. It does not educate. America can never have a socialist government. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Nam Young Horn, to be followed by Kent Leaper.
Ms. Horn, the better half of Mr. Horn.
Hello.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good to see you all. Before I speak, there are, here is a satellite picture about the Korea. It's from satellites. I hope you can see.
If you could, hold her timer, please. If you can put it on the table, right between the black marks there, on the other side, flip it over, and we'll get it up on the big screen. And Jonathan, could you put that up, or?
Yes.
Let's go ahead and get that up before we start a clock.
Oh, right there.
Oh, we got a new, thank you.
All right.
Is that the new protocol now? The, the overhead?
Yes, just slide a little bit. Okay. Yep. Yeah. Oops. Oui.
It's okay. That's all right.
This is so slippery. Okay. Looks like that.
You can get it just right, I suppose. There we go.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Horn, you're back on the clock. Go for it.
This is actual pictures taken from satellites. There are two Korea on the Korean Peninsula. The Democratic People's Republic of Korea occupies the northern half. The people are desperately poor and have no freedom of liberty. The people are virtual slaves in this socialist, socialist nation. The freely elected Republic of Korea occupies the southern half, where the rich economy is thriving and people enjoy a good life of freedom and liberty. Millions died in a war to keep the South free. I was born and raised in the Republic of Korea, the southern portion. Socialism and free are not comparable. If you ever thought that way, you are out of your mind. Never, ever. America is the most greatest country in the world. Why would anyone want to change it? But thank you for that resolution. You did the right things. This is what it's like from satellite. Right here is north, this is south. And of course, here is China. This is not fake news. This is real. So, I see the speakers here for socialist country. I just can't believe they can even think like that. If light goes up like this here, those, the people will go out on the street, they will, they can't figure out why it's no light. I like to have lights on the street, so I can see my neighbors and friends, and just beautiful things. Socialism, they don't work. I didn't come to this country to even hear that. Americans, Americans should never even talk about that. The Americans made this world have some hope. So, thank you, and hope you keep that resolution going. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Horn. I, I let you go an extra fifteen seconds longer, just letting everybody know, it's long, hold, somebody will pull the video and time it, okay? Because of the function of the overhead.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Horn.
Well, I also like to say, I know I stand here before and also fight with you. I also stand here today. I respect all of you. And I don't want to say do the right things. I'm sure you are sitting there to try to do the right thing, right?
Thank you, Ms. Horn.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Kent Leeper, to be followed by Douglas Gibbs.
Mr., how do you say your name, sir?
Leeper.
Mr. Leeper, good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity I have to speak tonight. I'm here to support Resolution Nineteen. I know that we might think that, well, the Democrats aren't really secret socialists. All I know is that Bernie Sanders, a frontrunner for the President of the United States, is a member of what party? So I'm just saying. So it could be that, it might seem unreasonable because it isn't city business to have a resolution like that, like Resolution Nineteen. I'm just thinking that because there is such a momentum towards socialism and that it doesn't really work very well with the Constitution, that perhaps if you had a resolution, it'd help guide your decisions for the people in this city, that I've been, I voted for cityhood thirty years ago to preserve our freedoms. Anyway. So I'm, I'm for Resolution Nineteen. The signing, I just want to say, the signing of the Constitution on September seventeen, seventeen eighty-seven, by the thirty-nine state representatives, began the American experiment. We've already heard that. We've always heard that. Of a limited government and individual responsibility. Socialism turns its back on these ideals. The Constitution was based on the principle that our human rights are God-given and that the federal government was to keep its hands off these rights. Socialism puts its hands all over these rights. The Constitution provides a judicial system, a military, a limited legislative body, interstate commerce, rules for naturalization, and the power to collect taxes and make treaties. Other than that, the federal government was to keep his hands off our rights and just get out of our way. Socialism turns its back on these ideals. It says that we in the central government will provide more and more of your needs because we care so much. It says that we in the central government will provide food and clothing and housing and health care and education because we care so much. Well, the federal government has no constitutional business to get involved in that. Are these important issues? They certainly are, but they were to be addressed in other ways by a free people. Socialism says that in order to do all these wonderful things, we'll have to take more and more of your money and more and more of your freedoms. So I'd like to point out that people in prison are provided with food and clothing and health care and all the good stuff.
I always hate to cut people off, but I have to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Douglas Gibbs, to be followed by Jeremy Oliver.
Mr. Gibbs, good evening to you, sir.
Good evening. It's been a while since I've seen you. Glad to see you. I am a local constitutionalist. I teach classes in Temecula and Corona on the U.S. Constitution, and in Menifee I teach classes on economics and government. And the framers wrote the Constitution paying special attention to not allowing socialism. Now, while that term did not exist, they knew exactly what it was. In fact, the redistribution of wealth, Samuel Adams talked about it, but he called it schemes of leveling, and he called it both despotic and unconstitutional. The Constitution was written in such a way that there is no authority granted to the federal government allowing the federal government to control or own the means of production. Now, as Dr. Omara, last time I called him Mister, and he got a little nervous about it, Dr. Omara has pointed out socialism is the social control of the means of production, which ultimately what happens is our human nature does not naturally do that. We naturally are free enterprise creatures. We are naturally people who like to aspire and do better in our lives and, and reach for the stars. And so therefore, a government has to come in to quell any inspiration or innovation and push it down so that everybody's equally miserable. Now, there's no authority granted, not only that, but in Article Four, Section Four, as has been brought up a couple times, it commands the government, federal government, to guarantee a republican form of government. If you read Madison's notes during the convention and the ratification debates notes later, that included a laissez-faire economic system. Laissez-faire meaning allowing it to take its own course with as little government interference as possible. In fact, much of our system was based on Adam Smith's writings. He called it the invisible hand, the invisible hand of, of us, the free enterprise system, regulating our own economy. Now, what socialism is, many of the things that get brought up about socialism and the characteristics of socialism, and so, well, authoritarianism, all that jazz, that's not what it is. That's what the results are. What it is, is control of the means of production. What comes out of that, in order to make sure everybody stays equal and nobody tries to make more for themselves, is that authoritarianism. It always arises in every socialist system. Every time in history that has happened. I want to also say if you, Adam, you know, I totally lost my notes because I was just talking to you guys. I forgot about my notes. So let me wrap it up this way. I appreciate the fact that you guys put that resolution up. Matter of fact, Matt, Ron, we met during the election season. You came into the headquarters where I was volunteering, and we had a little bit of a talk about the Constitution. And I appreciate the fact that you co-sponsored that resolution.
Mr. Gibbs, finish your thought.
Okay.
Real quick.
But what I would like to do, because there are some difficulties in the resolution, is rewrite it. And I have been working on that, and if it is okay to present that to you as a possible future resolution for, as an agenda item.
Fascinating. Thank you. And I do enjoy the contrasting opinions of, of Dr. Omara and yourself.
He and I have had a little fun on the internet.
Yeah, yeah.
We've been kind of going back and forth. He's been commenting on my website, Political Stash. We've been kind of going back and forth. And I do appreciate, while I disagree with you, I appreciate your belief, the fact that you have a passion for what you believe.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Jeremy Oliver, to be followed by Arbid Anderson.
Mr. Oliver, good evening to you, sir.
Good evening, Council. Thanks for letting me address you today. I, I can't believe I'm here. I don't usually come to these things. But I saw the, the item on the agenda a few weeks ago, so I decided to watch on television and was completely blown away at what I saw of the town that I moved to in nineteen seventy-eight. I've been here ever since then and seen this town grow in a way that I'm proud of. And what I saw last week, like I say, it blew me away. We have a sign behind me that says R.I.P. Resolution Nineteen. And what it should say is R.I.P. one hundred million people that have died from socialism. And, and maybe she'll put up the LOL sign and, and misspell words to appeal to a culture much younger than her. But what I'm seeing here is, is, I don't know if it's a combination of altruistic motives, trying to do right for the fellow man, which I can get behind, mixed with ignorance. And ignorance for history and an ignorance for our Constitution. This is a, this is something that should just be an open and shut case. Our, our country was built on the principles of our Constitution and where it might not spell out the principles of capitalism. It is, it is congruent with the principles of capitalism, whereas socialism is completely incongruent with the principles of capitalism. In fact, I was here when Temecula didn't have a sports park. We needed a place to play. We had football over here at Sam Hicks. But the town came together because we didn't have a city at that time to rely on. We didn't go to the federal government. Instead, we came together as a city, and we built Ronald Reagan Sports Park, and that was out of capitalism. It could not have been done through socialist programs. And, and I think that's what it is. We're mixing up social programs, which I can get behind, with socialism. And they could not be any more different. And again, I was, I worked with the Chamber of Commerce when we put up the incubation for, for small businesses. And again, another social program could not happen in a socialist country. It relies on capitalism. It relies on businessmen contributing and local citizens contributing for a common goal. And so, I mean, we're at the point where we here in Temecula, we, we all know our constituents here, and, and this is a capitalist city by, by every means. And, and you were bombarded with a group of socialists that came and maybe caught you off guard. So I'll give you a break. But I don't blame them for their ignorance. I know you all know the difference between socialism and capitalism and how it relates to our Constitution. So I can only hold you accountable, and we'll vote for the next city council based on, on this vote. I haven't got a haircut since the last city council meeting that, that this was discussed, and I'm waiting to see where I get my next haircut.
Mr. Oliver, thank you for speaking tonight, but your time's up.
Thank you for your time, everyone.
You're very welcome. Next speaker, please.
Arbid Anderson, to be followed by David Burris.
Mr. Anderson, good evening to you, sir.
Good evening, Maran, city council members. And I'd like to give a shout out to all my fellow patriots. Ten years, Tea Party, this was, this was our theme for this year, stop socialism. Socialism by any other names is murder by the government. Wherever socialism has reared its ugly head, it has left a trail of misery and death. It fails as a political and an economic system. Socialism always promises equality and even-handedness, but concentrates power into the hands of a few that dictate every aspect of a citizen's life. It shifts power from the people to the party. What we see in socialism is a concentration of power. And that's exactly the same as progressivism in this country, is a shift of power from the people to a small government elite. And we're asked tonight, why are we talking about this? Why? Because you are where the rubber meets the road. This is our republic and our democratic form of operation at the grassroots level. And I appreciate you're allowing us to come before you tonight and voice our concerns because part of the First Amendment is the ability of the citizen to address grievances to the government, to be able to petition the government, to be able to speak freely. And anytime socialism has been instituted, the first thing to go out the door is their Second Amendment's rights and then their First Amendment rights. This is, this is, the classic example of this is what's going on in Venezuela right now. If you want to see what happens between a market economy based on capitalism and a democratic form of government to a form of pure democracy, which leads to socialism, Venezuela is the example. It's the example of a dictatorship of a fifty-one percent majority. Anytime that the people are allowed to vote, vote money out of their fellow citizens' pockets, then you're going to have problems. To quote a few famous people on the object of socialism, Margaret Thatcher once said, "The problem with socialism is that it eventually runs out of other people's money." And that's exactly what's happening in Venezuela. Our four, our founders didn't, didn't address socialism. They addressed schemes of leveling, as Sam Adams talked about, also, which predates.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah.
I, I hate cutting people off, but in the interest of fairness, your time's up.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And, and just as a side note, anybody who wants a Constitution, you're welcome to get one. Those are paid for by myself, not the city, but we're happy to give them out because they're pretty cool. Next speaker, please.
Then the next speaker is David Burris, to be followed by Bob Cow.
Mr. Burris, good evening to you, sir.
Hey, good evening, everybody. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak and also for anybody who's been distracted by my daughter. She's enjoying herself tonight. So, I didn't prepare any remarks, and please forgive me for that. I don't want to be inequent or to get unfocused at any point. But I really came tonight to listen, and I think that's something that we would all benefit from, just a willingness to listen to each other's side. What I'm noticing is it occurs to me that there is still a sense that we're talking about two different things. But fundamentally, I came to last month's meeting because the text that was used to introduce the resolution via social media specifically references our act of targeting people and identifying them as enemies. Now, I don't think there's any enemies in this room. I think we're all Americans. And there may be some doubts about the affiliations or the identity or the political beliefs of some of the people here. But I believe that they're sincere, good people in this room. And I moved to this city two years ago, signed that mortgage paperwork, signed my life away, because I really felt that my wife and I and my daughter would be welcomed here and be treated like any other citizen, even though we're a biracial family, even though we're both probably left-leaning. I can walk down my street and play at the neighborhood park and speak openly and freely with my neighbors. And what seemed to happen with this resolution is that it seemed to stir the pot and point fingers. And a lot of people felt threatened by that. One woman spoke very eloquently about how there's an effect where someone could be made to be the other. And once that happens, it's easy to rationalize mistreatment. And that might hopefully stop some macho posturing or veiled threat. Yet I think we see all too often that things escalate, and people get hurt. In the two and a half years that I've lived here, I've had threats shouted at my wife and I as we walked down Front Street, as teenagers, probably messing around. My wife is African-American. My daughter is biracial. I don't accuse anyone in this room of racism, but I don't like when people are poked because then they feel like they're being victimized, and things get agitated very quickly. So I'm speaking in defense of my wife, my daughter, myself, to be able to freely express my opinion and be treated as an American like anyone else. I know there are people in this room that are very unhappy and unsatisfied with the way some things happen in current American life. And they find an identity, and they can slap a slogan on their shirt or find a family in a group that has common belief.
Your time's up. Thank you for speaking tonight. I appreciate your speaking.
Yeah.
And you got a beautiful duck.
Hey, thank you.
You're very welcome.
I don't mean to be rude to anybody. We're going to leave because I'm definitely, it's my interest in being here.
Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Bob Cow, to be followed by Ken Dilberg.
Mr. Cow?
Bob Cow.
Yeah, you're on. I can yell it.
Hello there, to Council. There's a sign behind me that says, "Rest in peace, Resolution Nineteen." There is no more Resolution Nineteen, so I'm going to name it, and I'm going to call it socialism. Rest in peace, socialism. Resolution Nineteen. Okay. Dear Council, please re-agendize the socialism versus Constitution resolution. Last time, I'm going to read this this time because I, I, I didn't, wasn't prepared last time. We were not prepared. We didn't organize. This time we tried to. The Constitution defines our nation as a republic, as we talked about before, in Article Four, Section Four. We are not a democracy. In a republic, powers are decentralized. In a, excuse me, in a republic, powers are decentralized. In democracy, they are not. The majority rules over the minority. In a republic, there is a separation of powers at the federal level and decentralization of power to the state level, as defined in the Tenth Amendment. For example, centralizing power, as proposed by the Democrats in their attempt to get rid of the Electoral College, would allow large Democrat cities to control less populated states. That is a move away from republicanism, that, the foundation of the Constitution. Socialism is slavery by a centralized power using overtaxation and overregulation. It has no place in our Constitution. The word socialism did not exist at the time of the Constitution when it was formed. The word socialism did not exist at the time of the Constitution when it was formed, so therefore it could not be in the Constitution. Later in our American history, though, I like to say Lincoln would say, against socialism, "I always thought that the man who made the corn should eat the corn." So that's capitalism, even though it's not said, capitalism wasn't made until Karl Marx coined it. Socialism divides people into groups. It is now starting to embrace antisemitism as it did 100 years ago. I'm looking at the ones in the government right now that are going antisemitic. I call socialism the American Taliban. They destroy and change history. Socialism has many faces. Remember that Hitler and Stalin got along just fine when they split Poland in two in 1939. Last meeting here, a history teacher called this resolution garbage, okay? Quote, "garbage." Words matter, as one of the other people had said, words matter. This was inflammatory and degrading language meant to bully the authors of this resolution and those who had supported it. It also is meant to humiliate, that is very bad for dialogue, professors and teachers especially, and that was a teacher who said that on Words Matter. Professors and teachers should not use such language here or in the classroom. Words matter.
Mr. Cowell?
It's over?
Time's over, yeah. Thank you for speaking tonight. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Ken Dilberg to be followed by Bonnie Parsley.
Mr. Dilberg, is that say it right, Dilber?
Dilberg.
Dilbert, welcome, sir.
Thank you. A few weeks ago, I heard that the Temecula City Council was going to propose a resolution reaffirming the principles of the U.S. Constitution. I assumed every citizen would be interested in this sort of thing, as I was. So I went to the city website to investigate. After reading the proposed resolution, I thought, well, this is a no-brainer. I was sure the resolution would be approved. However, that's not what happened. I was shocked. Then I watched the video on April 23rd meeting. Wow, how could so many people spin and twist the meaning of the statement so as to promote political agendas? The resolution statement was clear, true, and yet they disregarded facts to attack the council, wanting to intimidate with emotional outbreaks and phony allegations. The presentation they gave was to give a false impression that the resolution was aimed at causing some sort of harm to innocent citizens. The Declaration of Independence gives the justification for the founding of this country, and it states that we have unalienable rights given by our Creator, including life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. The preamble to the Constitution states that the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, provoke general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty for ourselves and our posterity, were the reasons for founding this country. How can anyone be against that? I don't understand it. Some of the speakers said they felt they were being ostracized for their beliefs. They seem to ignore the protection of the Bill and Rights. The First Amendment guarantees the right to speak freely and protects you from government persecuting individuals for their belief. However, this currently is being abused by majorities to force the majority to speak only with political correctness so as not to offend anyone. I'm sorry, but I'm offended by the attacks on my free speech and no one seems to care about my individual rights. It's a sad state that your self-esteem could be so poor that words will affect you in such a negative way. If they can explain to me why socialism is so superior, why are millions of people breaking into this country instead of China, Venezuela, Nicaragua, Cuba, or North Korea? How come every time that socialism ends up with a failed economy? Twenty years ago, I was in China, and they were proud of their new economic enterprise zones. And when I went there, I said, "Cool, this is capitalism." They were quick to correct me, saying, "No, this is Chinese communism." But no matter what you call it, they were transitioning to a more capitalistic approach. And today, China has a middle class and enjoys benefits of their improved status. There are now Chinese tourists throughout the world, and all over Southeast Asia, countries are building resorts, amusement parks, aimed at this new market. As China moves away from state ownership of everything, misguided people here are trying to force us towards this same socialism.
Mr. Dilberg, thank you for speaking tonight, sir.
Okay.
Take care.
The next speaker is Bonnie Parsley to be followed by Donald Parsley.
That was Presley, Ms. City Clerk?
Parsley.
Parsley, I believe.
Parsley, got it. Thank you for coming tonight, Ms. Parsley.
Good evening. I was disturbed by speeches against a resolution supporting the Constitution two weeks ago. I don't doubt that many of the speakers were sincere in their support of socialism. However, I believe that most of them do not understand what happens to a country when it goes down this road. What I find especially sad is that a history professor does not understand that you cannot have socialism without control and you cannot have control without coercion. The United States of America was founded on an idea, the idea that all men are created equal. Socialists misunderstand this idea. This does not mean that government is to create economic inequality or impose policies that would redistribute wealth any more than they could redistribute talent or make everyone equally beautiful. There is not one socialist nation that has not evolved into tyranny. Socialism erodes personal responsibility, pride in achievement, individualism, and imagination. It destroys incentive, ambition, and the work ethic that has led to invention. It offers no joy and will shatter our unity as patriotic Americans. In fact, it will kill everything that has made America the beacon of freedom and hope in the world. Socialism is contrary to human nature and will result in black markets, crime, and fear. The speakers from two weeks ago stated that we already have socialist programs such as Medicare and Social Security. How are these programs working out for us? Both of these programs will run out of money soon. Socialists think they can create a greater future by taking from the rich and giving to the poor. They are naive if they think rich people and businesses will stay in the country once their taxes reach 70% or more. At that point, socialists will then have to take from the middle class, and soon there will be only the poor, along with an elite government class who will continue to take whatever they want. Lessons from socialist and communist nations teach us this. Socialists like to frame their ideas in moral language. They will even quote the Bible and the U.S. Constitution, but we must not fall for their deception. Once they gain power, they will destroy both religion and the Constitution. President Reagan said, "Freedom is never more than one generation away from extinction."
Ms. Parsley? I'll have to cut you off at that point. Thank you for speaking tonight.
The next speaker is Donald Parsley to be followed by John Willis.
Mr. Presley, good evening to you, sir. I keep getting wrong, Parsley or-
It's Parsley.
Parsley, okay.
Don Parsley.
Got it, got it, sir. Thank you for coming tonight.
Mayor, city council, my name is Don Parsley. I'm 76 years old, and I'm a retired civil engineer. I'm a resident of your sister city, Marietta. I've been there for 17 years. I've been in California for 81 years. I would like to thank each and every one of you for the carefully worded resolution that you brought up a couple of weeks back for the Constitution of the United States. We need it. We must have it. I'd like to repeat what our president, Donald Trump, said, "We will never become a socialist I would like to request that you vote for and pass the resolution affirming the Constitution of the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parsley, for speaking tonight. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is John Willis to be followed by Larry Pebblebus.
Thank you. Mr. Willis, good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'd like to speak to the reincarnation of this Resolution 19. You know, as elected officials, your first duty per the Declaration of Independence is to secure our rights. These rights are God-given and unalienable. So your number one job is to secure my right to pursue happiness, basically. It's not to guarantee any kind of outcome, it's just to pursue my dream to do my own thing. Now, I've heard some people talking about Democrats are not socialists or not communists. Well, in my opinion, Democrats are socialistites, socialists are communistites, and my evidence is wealth redistribution. You know, the inception of our country, it was sparked by a miniscule tax on a luxury item, tea. Now Democrats think we should give at least half of our income to them to pay for lunches for people that bring their children here from another country, foreign nationals. Their schools are actually 46 worse in the country, and in California, when I was a kid in school, they were fifth best. So their record is atrocious. They have certain terms, like one of them is environmental justice. That's just another wealth redistribution scam. I don't know where it ends, but you know, they want to actually tax our tap water, they want to tax the water we drink. I find it to be offensive, and I wish they would at least just be honest, that they are a bunch of communists, they do not want us to have our, secure our rights for free speech and to live as we will. They call everything we do hate. That poor man talked about his daughter being victimized. I denounce that, but you ought to try walking around a Democratic-controlled area with a MAGA hat, and you're going to find out what real racism is. It's uncalled for, and it's all outrageous. And I wish you would please support this Resolution 19. I mean, this lady with her picture of North and South Korea should be all the evidence we need between a democratic society, mob rule, or a Republican society. There's no reason in mob rule for anyone, since they don't own anything basically, for them to improve their own life in life. They're just going to sit there with their hand out, take what the government gets them, and to that, they're only going to do as much work as they're forced to do. Whereas in America, again, the right to pursue happiness, you can do whatever you want. You could be the mayor, you could be the city manager, you could have any one of these jobs, or you could be a homeless person. It's our God-given right. Please, secure our rights. Thank you.
Mr. Willis, right on time. Golly, good. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Larry, Larry, I'm sorry, your last name, I could not pronounce it.
For the record, my name is Larry De Vilbus.
De Vilbus, with a P.
Yes, and we're going to take a little break because I'm a rancher from Alaska, and I came down here less than two months ago to direct a mission called Gospel Recordings, and it's just down the street on Enterprise Circle, and we are celebrating 80 years this year, our claim to fame, and if you come to the open house, you'll see how it happens, but we have servers that broadcast on the internet over 6,500 languages. And my part in that puzzle as a linguist had been doing Bible translation and working down in South America and in other places in the world, but I'm now directing this mission and would like to take the opportunity to invite you up to see how that takes place. And we appreciate the red-blooded patriotic environment here in Temecula.
Mr. Pre Vilbus, thank you for coming and speaking. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Tom Staba to be followed by our final speaker, Karen Ensorj.
Can you repeat Tom's last name, please?
I believe it's Staba if I read the writing correctly.
Nope, it's Stoba.
Stoba.
But everybody gets it wrong, so.
Mr. Stoba, thanks for coming tonight.
Well, thank you, too. Good evening, everybody. From the Constitution to potholes, there were several streets, La Serena, Maraga, and Solana, that I drive a lot on. I think they were resurfaced last year, I'm not sure, but it hasn't been that long ago. Those streets are terrible, and if anybody's driven on them, you know that. So I don't know what happened, if you can blame it on the road diet, where we went from two lanes down to one lane, and now all the cars are going on that one lane. Was it all of the rain that we had over the winter time? But I sure hope that you can see yourselves getting that fixed, and soon, and hopefully there's some sort of warranty on it so we don't have to pay the guy, the company that resurfaced those streets and whatever other streets maybe they did, but they're in a terrible disrepair. So if there's something that can be done, I sure would appreciate it. It sure would be nice to get some nice, smooth streets again.
Mr. Staba, I wouldn't be surprised if they're on their way there right now.
Right now?
No.
Well, maybe tomorrow.
I'm kidding, of course, but you know, Mr. Pat Thomas has heard you. Also, I'll take this opportunity, the city has a fantastic app you can download that gives you access to reporting potholes, reporting graffiti, and a bunch of other good stuff that goes right to the source. So anyway, avail yourself of that, and while we like seeing you here at a city council meeting, don't want you to come unless you really want to be here. Okay? In which case, the app works just fine.
Fine, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, and this is our last speaker?
Yes, Karen is our last speaker.
Karen.
And Karen, I believe your last name is Ensorj?
Correct.
Can you say it for us, Karen?
Ensorj.
Miss Ensorj, welcome tonight.
Hi, I'm the historian for the American Legion, and we have veterans from all the cities over here, and I keep them informed on basically everything that pertains to them. Right now, Democrats are shooting down their veterans' benefits. Seems to me that socialism, socialism Democrats, whatever they want to call themselves, always regurgitate the same thing. Ask not what your country can do for you, it's the opposite. They want their takers. They take, take, take. They have poisoned the minds of our public school system, university systems. President Reagan actually barred Angela Davis. They are flashing Angela Davis and other former 70s icons all over the pages of young girls' Vogue magazines. They are poisoning the minds. I was shocked to hear about this from Mr. Bob Cowell. I informed our veterans, they're not happy about this, and when it comes down to it, let's say you enact this socialism in your city and it spreads to Marietta, Wildomar, and it spreads everywhere, and everything changes. Veterans will not allow that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to the portion of our council meeting for city council reports. If anybody'd like to give a report, either signal at me or get in the queue. Mr. Schwenk.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and everyone out in the audience tonight. I have a couple of videos I want to show. We'll start with one on our homeless outreach. I often get questions either via email or just running into folks at the store, "What are we doing?" Well, this video will give you a little insight to what we are actually doing.
Homeless Outreach Team, here to give you a quick update on what we've been doing the last few months. First, I'd like to encourage the community to continue with their generous donations to our community stakeholders and partners. Three that come to mind immediately are Project Touch, Community Mission of Hope, and Assistance League. With our partnership, we've been able to get several people off our streets. And now I'd like to discuss with you how you can help. Number one, please use our city's mobile app.
You are our eyes and ears. We cannot be everywhere all the time. Sometimes we may have resources for an individual and we cannot find him. Our goal is a safe community. Our goal is a safe community for everyone. When reporting on the app, remember, it is simply a reporting app. It does not generate a call for service. Homelessness in itself is not a crime, but if you observe or recognize any crimes of progress, please call 911. For all other crimes, please call 951-696-Help.
And one thing to please remember, if you're reporting, report in a legitimate way. Social media does not count. And secondly, if you don't report it, it didn't happen. What can you do to report a homeless concern safely? The city of Temecula has a free app that can be used to report a homeless concern. Examples of homeless concerns are aggressive solicitation, trespassing, areas of debris, and active encampments. Simply open the app, tap on, report issue, contact staff, and tap homeless concern. Follow the simple directions. You can write a report as well as post pictures. It's very user-friendly and will only take a few minutes. Once you submit the report, it will be forwarded to our homeless outreach team. Together, you can make a difference.
So I really want to encourage everyone to use the app, and please, you know, I've seen social media posts, and I've talked to folks, and we really don't want anyone to take anything into their own hands. Want to report it via the app or a call, but don't take it into your own hands. It's just important to do that. It's important to just document it, and then let us handle everything. And so if you see something, say something, is the old adage, right? With that, one more quick video. Tomorrow's Bike to Work Day. Commissioner Audia is long gone, but we have a brief video for Bike to Work Day tomorrow.
Hello, I'm Deputy Brian Chow.
And I'm Deputy Rob Barlet with the Temecula Police Department.
May is National Bike to Work Month, and the city has proclaimed Wednesday, May 15th, as Bike to Work Day in Temecula. We encourage all local commuters to fasten their helmets, get on their bikes, and join us. Over the next few weeks, there will be an increased number of cyclists on city streets, so we would like to remind drivers to remain vigilant and proceed with extra caution while commuting to work. Don't forget to share the road and drive safe, Temecula.
All right, so I'd really like to encourage the community to come out tomorrow. We'll be on the steps of City Hall. We'll be one of the pit stops. I'll be brewing coffee like I do every year. Really looking forward to it. Wanted to thank Chief McConnell for sending the officers out with us tomorrow morning and for making that video. Really appreciate that. Just going to be a good day. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Swank. Mr. Stewart, anything from you?
No.
Okay. Ms. Edwards, anything from you?
Mr. Ryan. Yep, just a quick one. Should have a slide, I hope. All right, there it is. So last year, if you remember, we were all about safety. That trickles over to this year, as every year in Temecula, public safety, number one function that we serve. And if you hadn't heard, just wanted to highlight this. The district attorney's office had a task force that was put together related to illegal dispensaries and illegal cannabis operations in Riverside County. We partnered with them, along with our police department. And Chief McConnell, thank you again for putting those resources where they were needed. And we were able to, in what, roughly two months, shut down sixteen illegal cannabis dispensaries within the city limits. You know, just wanted to thank folks, District Attorney's Office, and our law enforcement personnel, and code enforcement as well, for all the work they did on that. Despite what I think some of our public might have thought, none of those businesses were operating legally, none of the products they were selling were legal, and none of the products they were selling were certified by the state of California as safe. And yet, these, you know, on the surface seemed like legitimate businesses, and not to get too much into the details of the ongoing efforts by the DA's office in prosecution, but a lot of these were run by cartels and, you know, gang members. And so it's just exciting as anything to see that these businesses are no longer operating in Temecula, and we've got a strong force out there making sure that it stays that way. So just wanted to highlight such a wonderful success in very short period of time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I have nothing this evening. We're going to move to the consent calendar portion. I'll read the rules. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There'll be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Number two, approve the action minutes of April 23rd, 2019. Number three is approve the list of demands, which I will be abstaining on that item, because there's a couple of checks that were written to me for reimbursements. Number four, adopt an ordinance 19-04 to approve update to existing Uptown Temecula specific plan. New streets in Luthy. This is a second reading. Number five, adopt an ordinance 19.05, excuse me, to approve Uptown Temecula specific plan amendments and street scape and sidewalk improvement standards. This is also a second reading. Number six, approve the third amendment to the agreement with American Forensic Nurses, Inc., doing business as AFN for phlebotomy services. Number seven, approve the first amendment to the non-exclusive services agreement between the city of Temecula and Visionaries Image Company for fiscal year 2018-2019. Number eight, approve equipment purchase agreement with California Electrical Supply for wireless lighting control system hardware. Number nine, approve an agreement for consultant services with Lebel Marvin, Inc., for the pavement rehabilitation program, citywide Meadowview Loop. I understand that because of local homeownership, Mayor Pro Tem Stewart will be abstaining, is that correct? Okay. Number ten, award a construction contract to Hardy and Harper for the pavement rehabilitation program, citywide Meadowview Loop, PW Public Works, 18-10. And I believe Mayor Pro Tem Stewart, you're going to abstain from that one as well, again due to homeownership in the area. Eleven, approve the third amendment to consultant services agreement number 13-145 with SOMAS for Pachanga Parkway Environmental Mitigation, project number PW 11-01. Number twelve, approve parcel map 37485 located at the southwest corner of Enterprise Circle and Winchester Road. Number thirteen, receive and file temporary street closures for 2019 Summer Fest events. Would anybody like to pull anything, or would you like to entertain a motion?
No, I'm of approval of the consent calendar noting that Mayor Pro Tem Stewart has abstained on numbers nine and 10.
And what about mine on item three?
Oh, sorry, yeah. And Mayor Nigar abstaining on number three.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. And just so I'm clear, Madam City Clerk, we have no speakers, do we? Okay, so everybody with those noted abstentions could go ahead and register their voter That passes five zero with the noted abstentions. City council sits as many different bodies. I'm going to recess the Temecula City Council meeting and turn the gavel over to President Stu Stewart of the Temecula Community Services District. He is the president.
I will call to order the Temecula Community Services District meeting. Please note, Mayor Clerk, or, Mayor Clerk, City Clerk, that we're all here. Are there any public comments? Okay. So the consent calendar consists of item number fourteen, approve the action minutes of April 23rd, 2019. Item fifteen, approve a consultant service agreement with Nicholas Tiers in the amount of $50,000 for advertising and marketing related to design services.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and please vote. All right, that passes five zero. Directors' report.
Mr. President, a quick reminder that on Saturday, May 25th, I think we have a slide also at 6:30 PM. Maybe a slide? Yes. Okay. Just a quick reminder that on Saturday, May 25th, at 6:30 PM on the Civic Center steps, the community is invited to a special event, the Memorial Day Observance Tribute to Heroes, with an inspirational performance by the Temecula Valley Symphony, as we proudly honor our fallen heroes, as well as those who served or are presently serving in all of our armed forces. And also, Monday, May 27th, the Temecula Valley FFW Post 4089 presents Memorial Day Observance at the Temecula Duck Pond Fallen Heroes Memorial. This tribute will be from 11 o'clock AM to 12:30 PM. Once again, come on out and honor our fallen heroes, as well as those who served or are currently serving. And that, Mr. President, concludes my report.
All right, thank you. General Manager's report.
Nothing further than that.
All right, any Board of Directors have anything to add?
No, thank you.
Okay. So I'll adjourn this meeting until Tuesday, May 28th, 2019.
Move to adjourn.
Oh. All right. It's been moved in second. Please, well, vote.
Your favorite?
Aye.
You're fine.
We're good.
My vote, no.
All right.
I'll make it difficult for you. I don't want to, I don't want to.
We're adjourned.
Okay. You got that, it's four to one. Okay, there you go. All right. All right, we're going to reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. This is a public hearing portion of our agenda. I must read the rules. Any person may submit written comments to the city council before a public hearing, or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing, or in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to the public hearing. Item 16, approve issuance of report in compliance with Government Code Section 65858D. Adopt interim urgency ordinance extending term of ordinance number 19-03 pertaining to small wireless facilities within the public right-of-way, and adopt resolution establishing a design policy for small wireless facilities. Mr. Peters, good evening to you, sir. Good to see you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. This is an extension to the urgency ordinance and design policy for small wireless facilities. Just last month, the city council adopted an interim urgency ordinance and design policy for the small wireless facilities in the public right-of-way. The urgency ordinance will expire on May 24th unless extended by the city council, and the extension gives staff one year to prepare the permanent ordinance. So the government code, when we passed the interim urgency ordinance, that was for forty-five days, and then it's required, if you want to go past forty-five, to extend it for a year, you have to have another public hearing. That's why we're here tonight. So the ordinance defines small wireless facilities in the right-of-way consistent with the FCC definition, and the policy established reasonable and objective design regulations, basically the policies to match our existing streetlights. And here's an example from last month's presentation. The photo on the left is an existing SCE Edison Streetlight, and then the photo on the right is an example of a small wireless facility in the right-of-way. So that's what our design policy is based on. There was one change since the last hearing on this. We're currently working with Verizon on our master license agreement for small cells in the right-of-way. They reviewed the design policy and had some comments, and we added to the design policy that any master license agreement, or MLA, would supersede the requirements of the design policy. MLAs allow the city further review and negotiation of more specific standards, and any MLA would require city council approval. And we think that addresses Verizon's concerns. So our next step would be to hire a consultant to update our telecommunications ordinance. We expect that to take about six months. And with that, staff's recommendation, the proposed urgency ordinance is exempt from CEQA, and staff recommends adoption of the urgency ordinance and the resolution to address small wireless facilities in the public right-of-way. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Question time. Anybody?
Nope.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so I am going to open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
We do. We have one speaker, Michael Farrar.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. It's Mike Farrar. I'm with Verizon Wireless. I think I'm too close to this mic. Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, esteemed staff, I want to thank you for the opportunity to participate in this lively and vibrant public forum. I hope that my comments are somewhat less polarizing. Notwithstanding that, I do want to first and foremost, take the opportunity to acknowledge the initiative undertaken by staff, specifically Mr. Patrick Thomas, in spearheading this initiative, trying to shepherd this, both the ordinance as well as the MLA. I was fortunate enough to meet Mr. Thomas at a recent American Public Works Association meeting, at which time he put on a presentation that was both heartening in terms of his vision. This city of Temecula is fortunate to have staff that has the innovative approach that Mr. Thomas does. Not every city has that asset. So that said, I would also take the opportunity to congratulate this council on the recent execution of the MLA with Verizon Wireless, as I understand, that was executed last week, that does permit and allow Verizon specifically to deploy on city-owned assets. I also would acknowledge the initiative and efforts undertaken herein to, in terms of belts and suspenders, try to offer a roadmap or pathway for deployment on other assets other than the city-owned. We did submit a letter to staff, as well as to Mr. Thorson, earlier today, outlining a few minor concerns that still persist. I expect that Mr. Thorson and staff, we can continue to work on tightening those up, so that they can more closely mirror the terms of the existing MLA, so that those non-city-owned assets would be available for the circumstances in which we would need to deploy such a vertical structure. So, again, thank you for the opportunity to participate, and I, at this point, do support the ordinance adoption, excuse me, the adoption of the perpetuation of the urgency ordinance in the hopes that we can continue to work on tightening up some of these items, some of the concerns outlined in the letter in the next iteration for the permanent ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers?
No.
We will close the public hearing. There's two matters under consideration. First one's an ordinance. I'll entertain, if there's no conversation or discussion, I'll entertain a motion to introduce the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, just one quick item. You also need to take an action to issue the report, that first recommendation in the staff report.
You would like a vote on that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, let's take a motion to issue the item number one, issue this report in compliance with Government Code Section 65858D. Need a motion?
Move approval is stated.
Second.
Voice vote, or you want a? I can't hear you.
She's pulling it up.
It's there for voting now.
Okay, let's do it. All righty. There we go. And that passes five zero. Now I need a motion to have the city attorney introduce the ordinance?
Move approval.
I'm sorry, actually, it's to adopt the ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, move approval for that, too.
What's the difference between introducing and adopting?
On a regular ordinance, it's introduced, and then two weeks later, it's adopted.
Right.
On an urgency ordinance, it's adopted at the first reading.
Got it. Thank you for that clarification.
And that also requires four-fifths vote, and we have to make findings as to why it needs to be adopted immediately.
Do you read the ordinance?
Only the title.
Okay, sounds good.
Move approval.
Second.
That was Edwards on the motion, second on Councilmember Swank, and Mr. City Attorney, if you'd read the title.
Yes. This is an interim urgency ordinance extending the term of ordinance number 19-03, an urgency ordinance of the city council of the city of Temecula, mending Chapter 17.04 of the City of Temecula Development Code, Telecommunication Facility and Antenna Ordinance, to add a new section, 17.04.
facility and antenna ordinance to add a new section, seventeen point four oh point two six zero, small wireless facilities in the public right-of-way enacted pursuant to Government Code Section three six nine three four, three six nine three seven, and six five eight five eight, declaring the urgency thereof and making a determination of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you. Please cast your vote. Looks like you did. That passes five to zero. We will move on to item three, no pun intended, but Resolution number nineteen. I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Oh, second.
Wait a minute.
Everybody, never mind. Okay, let me, I'll stop there.
Right.
That was a motion by Councilmember Edwards.
Just move on.
Never mind, there's so much I could, this is just a good joke opportunity, but I'll pass.
Yeah.
That was you on the second, Councilmember Ron?
Yep.
Okay, please cast your votes. And that passes five zero. All righty, moving on to the business portion of our meeting. Item seventeen, introduce an ordinance amending Section ten point two eight point zero one zero D. of the Temecula Municipal Code regarding prima facie speed limits on certain streets. Staff report. We do have one, it seems I can get over here. Okay, I think we're ready. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. The California Vehicle Code requires that local authorities reaffirm or adjust speed limits every seven years on the basis of an engineering traffic survey. The C. V. C. also mandates that posted speed limits be established by an E. N. T. survey, which provides a mechanism for legal enforcement of the speed limit by the use of radar or electronic speed measuring devices. E. N. T. survey is a survey of highway and traffic conditions that considers prevailing speeds, accident statistics, highway traffic, and roadside conditions, and establishing a speed limit that is not consistent with these conditions or not consistent with the eighty-fifth percentile of speed constitutes a speed trap that is not enforceable. So this year, Will Dan Engineering was the city's traffic engineer, conducted an E. N. T. survey of fourteen arterials that included fifty-one segments. The majority of the existing speed limits on those streets did not require a change to the posted speed limit. However, there were five locations that, where the speed limit was found to be an increase to that limit. Those are Commerce Center, portions of Margarita, portions of Meadows, and Wolf Creek Road South. That survey also recommends a decrease to this posted speed limit at twenty-one locations that are shown in this slide and the next slide. And due to the conditions that satisfy the residential district criteria, one of those streets is Del Rey between Cali Pina Colada, which is being recommended at the prima facie speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour. Also should be noted that the speed limit on Los Reno Way yielded a five to ten mile per hour decrease, and this was based on the road diet that was implemented at the time. Other speed reductions are attributed to increases in traffic volumes in some segments of roadways. Also, they can be attributed to the buffer bike lanes that we've been installing, and also bike lanes like along Margarita, Temecula Parkway, and other streets like that. Here's another portion of the decreased speed limits. You can see Rancho California Road, portions of Temecula Parkway, and also Wolf Store, or, excuse me, Wolf Valley Road, where we recently implemented a bike lane there as well. The slide before you shows the arterials that were surveyed. The recommended speed limits conform to the requirements of the Vehicle Code for establishing prudent speed limits that are consistent with roadway conditions, prevailing speeds, and more importantly, are enforceable. And quick summary presentation, that concludes it. If I answer any questions? Thank you. Any questions, colleagues? Mr. Ron?
Just a couple, couple of quick ones. I feel like the last time we went through this process, we had more speed limit increases than decreases, but my memory could be wrong on that.
The last time, which was about two years ago, there were some locations where we did increase the speed limit. Oddly enough, some of those streets that got increased are on here because of that road diet. Los Reno is one of those locations where we had a couple of segments that we increased the speed limit by about five miles per hour.
And so you mentioned Los Reno and a few other streets, but just out of curiosity of the roads that we've seen the decreases on, just roughly, how many of those are because of this sort of road diet, or, you know, traffic calming measures or things that have been done? I mean, just a, just a guess, you know?
Well, there was, you know, we had quite an aggressive bike lane program the past couple of years. So some of those are attributed to bike lanes. I would say probably about seven or eight arterials where we did some changes. We also, part of the process for doing an E. N. T. survey, that our engineers, part of their process is to collect volumes, data, and with that, some of the volumes increased, like on Margarita Road between Winchester and Solana Way, there was an increase in traffic there. There was other segments of the roadways that were the increase in traffic. Temecula Parkway, Rancho California Road had portions of the street where there was an increase in traffic as well. So all those factors influence eighty-fifth percentile, influence the conditions of the roadway.
No, it's good news, though. I'm glad to see it moving in that direction. Looks like a lot of what's been done in the city is working, so that's nice to see.
Are there any other questions? So I'll entertain a motion to have the city attorney introduce the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, we do have one speaker.
Oh, we do. I took it for granted that we didn't. Let's go ahead and call the first speaker.
Tom?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I learned that one of the streets where the speed limit is changing is Councilmember Stewart Street, so there's been a lot of activity in his neighborhood. So I think as long as there's no discussion by the council on that item, his abstention with respect to that one item should be sufficient.
Very good. Good evening, sir. Mr.?
Good evening, Stoba.
Yes. Got it.
I take exception to the speed limit reduction on Del Rey from thirty-five to twenty-five. Is there any?
Mr. Stoba, if you could hold on for just a second, we need Councilmember Stewart to go ahead and leave the room.
You know what? We keep it clean here. He lives in the area, and those are the rules.
I understand.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. You know what? If you can restart the clock?
How long do I have?
Five minutes.
Five minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, it says here, it was also determined that conditions on Del Rey Road between Cali Pina Colada and Avenida Del Reposa satisfies the residential district criteria as defined in the California Vehicle Code, and the establishment of the residential prima facie speed limit of twenty-five miles an hour is justified. Well, I went on the California Vehicle Code and looked up resident district, and it specifically says that within a quarter mile on both sides of the road, you have to have sixteen or more separate dwellings. When I went, because I live in Meadowview, and I counted the houses from Cali Pina Colada to Avenida Del Reposa, and I came up with a total of fifty-five houses that are fronting on Del Rey. Now, according to the California Vehicle Code for a residence district, you need sixty-four houses or more. So according to the way I understand it, the way the California Vehicle Code works, this doesn't qualify as a residential district. You can look this up on the California Vehicle Code, just like I did. It says sixteen residents per quarter mile. It's a mile between Cali Pina Colada and Avenida Del Reposa. So if you take the sixteen, you multiply that by four, you come up with sixty-four houses as a density, sixty-four or more houses. When I counted the houses on Del Rey between those two roads, there's only fifty-five So unless I'm missing something, I don't believe that this applies, and you can't change it from thirty-five to twenty-five miles an hour. I've been a Meadowview resident since nineteen eighty-eight, before the city was even established. It's always been at, well, when I got there, it was even more than that. There wasn't the speed limit. So whatever it was, forty-five, fifty-five, according to Riverside County, you know, why are you changing, you know, these speed limits? I know it's always in the, you know, for safety reasons, but, you know, for every, every speed limit that you reduce, that's, you know, not necessarily true, or every additional stop sign that you put in, and there are many stop signs, I think, in the city of Temecula that are kind of questionable. I was at, I was at a presentation at Temecula Valley Hospital last week. It's called Medical Gold Mines, and they talked about people having strokes, and I'm an old-timer, like some of you, and the doctor there last week said that for every minute that's lost in a stroke, a person can lose up to two million brain cells. So for every reduced speed limit, for every stop sign that's not necessary, the emergency vehicles get delayed. So, for what it's worth, like I said, unless I, unless I misunderstood something about the resident district, you know, that's, that's not a reason to justify going from thirty-five to twenty-five miles an hour.
Mr. Stoba, are you, are you done? Because I'm gonna seek some answers to your questions. Unlike the previous item, this is on the agenda, we can discuss it. Did you have something more?
Yeah, I don't know if I had mentioned it, but, you know, have there been a rash of accidents? Have people been hurt? Have cars been crashed along there because of that speed limit? Or is it just a few people that, you know, are crying wolf? I mean, where's the proof? Where's the evidence that we need to reduce it from thirty-five miles an hour, which it's been for, you know, years and years, down to twenty-five miles an hour?
Okay, I heard your questions, and I'm gonna frame them for our staff. You can be seated if you want. We need you to come back up. I'll let you know.
Okay.
So, Jerry, if you can quickly, just real quickly, because a lot of people, including myself sometimes, don't understand the eighty-five percentile, and we're, our obligation to do a survey all the time in that we have to take whatever results come. So that's question one, if you can give a brief explanation. And then question two, he brought up the Vehicle Code that talks about a certain number of houses. If you can try to address both of those things. Sure. So as I mentioned earlier, speed limits are established, and they're based on several conditions, and one of them is eighty-fifth percentile of speed, which is the speed of traffic that eighty-five percent of vehicles are traveling, and what happens is, you know, that they kind of disregard the top fifteen percent, and so they'll use that eighty-fifth percentile and the conditions, which includes accidents, other conditions that are not readily apparent to drivers. And based on all these findings, and volumes and accidents are all part of it, based on all these findings, the traffic engineer will review these, the information, and establish a reasonable and prudent speed limit. The eighty-fifth percentile of speed, most of the time governs what that posted speed limit is going to be, and if there's extraordinary circumstances, the Vehicle Code does allow for the speed limit to be reduced by five miles per hour lower than what that eighty-fifth percentile of speed. Now, in the case of Del Rey, the Vehicle Code states that, you know, there has to be sixteen or more residents within a quarter mile for an area to qualify as residence districts. There's other conditions, too, that go into that interpretation, you know, the close proximity of the home to the roadway. Some of the homes in Meadowview do not qualify for that because they're further apart, they're larger lots, the homes are set back seventy-five feet or more. In this case, you know, there's a lot of different conditions that governed what our traffic engineer found to be a residential district, the amount of driveways that are located in this area, and again, the home, the setback of the homes. As we were reviewing conditions in Meadowview, we posed this particular area to Will Dan, who's our traffic engineer, and based on their review and their findings, they agreed and recommended that a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit in this area was appropriate for conditions without having to do an eighty-fifth percentile survey. Got it. Thank you very much for that explanation. Are there any other questions of staff at this point?
Just one quick one on the follow-up on either medical or law enforcement response on, on the speed limits and stop signs and so forth.
Well, as a follow-up to that, I mean, obviously, the speed limits are established for the general motoring, public emergency vehicles, obviously are exempt from traveling in that. They don't have to abide by the twenty-five mile per hour speed limit, and obviously, when it comes to traffic controls, they have to exercise due caution, obviously going through a traffic signal or a stop sign, but again, it should not affect the response time, especially speed limits. And we have two experts over here that can validate that or refute that.
Sorry, okay, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Are there any other speakers? Okay, very good. Then I'll entertain conversation or motion to introduce the ordinance.
Move approval.
Yeah, I'll second.
Could you introduce the ordinance, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This would be an ordinance of the city council of the city of Temecula amending Section ten point two eight point zero one zero D. of the Temecula Municipal Code regarding the prima facie speed limit on certain streets.
And as the votes are cast, and we wait for the result, that goes four, zero, and one abstention. Mr. Stewart may return. Is it true you speed down Del Rey Road and threw off all the results?
Just kept going around the circle, around and round and round.
Okay. All righty, let's see here. Commission reports.
Well, wait.
Nope, this one.
Mr. Mayor, we have item number eighteen, please.
Now, you know, you threw me off, okay? Oh, item eighteen, never mind.
It's just been a tough night.
Yeah, no, 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 it's okay. It's been a long night. And no, you didn't throw me off, okay? I take it back. Item eighteen, approve updated adopt a park community beautification program at the request of Councilmember Ron. Would you like to give a report, Councilmember, or would you like the staff member? Okay, thank you. And who's gonna give the?
Mr. Mayor, Mike Wooton from our office has spearheaded this inner departmental effort, and we're excited to provide you with an update and a recommendation, so Mike, take your lead.
Mike, good evening, sir. Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. As mentioned, I'm Mike Wooton, Community Services Supervisor, and I'll providing, be providing an update on the Adopt a Park program. So in twenty eighteen, at the request of then-Mayor Ron, community service and public work staff explored options for implementing an Adopt a Park program. This program would allow individuals or groups to adopt a specific site in a volunteer capacity for the purpose of enhancing the beautification of city parks, trails, and green spaces. Many similar programs throughout the state were researched to determine which aspects were appropriate to incorporate into the city's program, and input from multiple departments was also used to identify potential sites and the types of appropriate activities. The initial Adopt a Park program was brought before council The initial Adopt a Park program was brought before council in October, where it received some excellent feedback and recommendations that would enhance the program to where it could be expanded to cover essentially any site, project, or adopter. While it's still being titled Adopt a Park, this community beautification program will be broad enough to make mostly any open space in the city available for adoption. This includes both passive and sports parks, green spaces such as creek or lake sections, trails, and also properties that border on county property. So the, the main purpose of the Adopt a Park program is the enhancement and beautification of our parks and open spaces, but staff believes it will also lead to greater public education and awareness of parks, recreation programs, and community services, and community or corporate support of park-related capital improvement projects. So staff identified different levels or tiers of projects and services that would be available to adopters. These tiers are custodial projects, which includes trash pickup, graffiti and gum removal, and minor maintenance. Beautification projects, which may involve painting of facilities, landscape planning, and amenity donation, donation, such as benches, trash cans, dog waste receptacles, and more. So while the first two tiers are ideal for passive parks, trails, and open spaces, the third tier is meant specifically for sports parks and special use sites, such as a dog park, where volunteer opportunities may be more limited due to scheduling events, due to scheduled events or high traffic volume. So this tier focuses more on amenity donations, including but not limited to wind screens, brick dust for ball fields, dog park items, or various sport supplies. And then also, capital improvement projects may also be available with this tier. So while the specific tiers are more of a guideline, adopters will have an opportunity to take on multiple levels of service or even request additional types of activities not listed. Of course, all projects and activities will be subject to approval by the Public Works Department. As you can see, this slide provides a list of general activities that are eligible during adoption. The activities such as the reporting of suspicious or illegal activity and litter removal will be standard for all tiers. However, as recommended by council, staff will encourage only the reporting of suspicious activity, and we will make it very clear that no enforcement will be allowed to ensure the safety of volunteers. The benefits of adopting a park for both the public and the city are numerous. It allows groups or individuals to participate in the beautification and upkeep of the parks in their community, cultivate community spirit, foster civic responsibility, and provide a venue for community service projects. Additional benefits include an increased awareness and involvement by the community and also park safety. Adopting groups will be recognized with the placement of a sign at the adopted location along with acknowledgement on the city's website. The Adopt a Park packet contains all the information that the public will need to inquire and apply for adoption, as detailed on this slide. And then once the application has been approved, a separate agreement along with both youth and adult waiver forms will be sent to the adopter. Staff will then meet with the adopter prior to any activities to discuss cleanup and maintenance priorities, and also provide general guidance and necessary training as needed. So going forward, thanks to the feedback provided by council that will allow us to offer a program that truly benefits the community, staff is recommending approval of the Adopt a Park program. And if approved, staff will begin promoting the program through TCSD's monthly series around and about Temecula, on social media sites, and will also send out a press release and reach out to potential adopter groups. Copy of the packet and a description of the program will also be available on the city's website. And then Community Service and Public Works staff will continue to work together to establish, establish training protocols and determine the types of assistance the city can provide. So that concludes my presentation. I want to thank you all for your time tonight and also for the guidance that was provided to enhance this program. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you. A very good staff report, Mr. Wooton. I appreciate that. Are there any questions? Ms. Edwards?
I have to ask to make sure that I have this straight. Are we offering adoption opportunities on individual items within a park, right?
So that is a possibility, and I'll use Ronald Reagan Sports Park as an example, where we do have different amenities, a skate park, the ball fields, even north-south, the Memorial Grove. So adopters would have the ability to adopt certain portions of that park concurrently.
Did you specifically mention the pooper-scooper bag station?
I did, yes, yes.
I just have several people in mind for that particular adoption, so I just wanted to make sure.
Any other questions of staff? All right, do we have any speakers? Okay, so we'll go to council discussion.
Great report. This is exciting. I think, you know, it'd be great to sit down with Community Services in the near future and, and our commissions as well. You know, Brad, I was thinking about you guys down in the HOA there, you know, maybe getting a little, you know, active engagement in the park down the road from you and all that. I think, you know, finding the right stewards, I guess, if you will. But then, you know, reminding folks that part of this messaging was during, you know, our, you know, community dialogue on public safety and some of those creek bed areas and, you know, canyon, you know, locations and all that where we have had, you know, increases in homelessness and encampments and so forth, that, you know, those adoption opportunities are there as well to get people into those spots, you know, make it more a part of their community and, and have them more engaged and, and helping to, you know, keep an eye out on, on their own backyard. So, you know, let's, let's get that rolled out, and I think it's a great opportunity. Look forward to working and seeing this thing move forward.
Anything else, Mr. Swank?
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you to Councilmember Ron for bringing this forward, and then obviously staff and all the hard work that everyone put into this program to make this happen. I think this is a great day for the community, right? Like, we can all pitch in and, and volunteer. I know we've got some harvesting friends that would love to pitch in on the fishing and trails and whatnot. I just think this is a fantastic program, so I'm really looking forward to this rolling out and seeing people throwing on some gloves and pitching in.
Great, and I concur with my colleagues' comments. I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second. That was Councilmember Swank and Councilmember Edwards. Please cast your vote. And that passes five-zero. Now, Madam City Clerk. Okay. I gotta look over there to make sure I get it right. Commission reports. Thank you. All right, how about we go to you, Mr. Sullivan?
No report this evening.
Oh, God bless you. How about you, Mr. Watts?
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing to report tonight.
Okay. No, I'm joking. If you guys have something to say. How about you, Mr. Levine?
I do.
Go for it.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I would like to throw many kudos to the way of Director Hawkins and the terrific staff who put on a terrific program all year long. May is no exception. I did want to point out that the Summer and Fall 2019 Activity Guide is now out. Registration began on May eighth. We have a new software platform. Ninety-nine percent of all registrations are now online, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Director Hawkins, but we have a hundred and twenty thousand reservations online right now.
Wow.
That is my report.
Thank you. And, and you know, I just take this opportunity, first of all, every time you send a representative from your commissions, it, it really is good. Oftentimes, we may not need you for your feedback, but you letting us know what's going on, but also you seeing what's going on in our chambers and taking that back to your respective commission. So I don't want to belittle that at all. I was just joking a minute ago, but really appreciate your work. Send that back to the commissions, if you would. I know I speak for the whole council in that regard.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Public Safety Report. Is it Jody or is it Lisa? Okay, Jody, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week was the kickoff of wildfire prepared this week, and I just wanted to give a message of wildland, wildland safety. So the Temecula Fire Station responded to seven hundred and forty calls in the month of April. The safety message this month is a little bit long, so if you go to the website to read about it, it gives you all kinds of tips for fire-safe construction materials, defensible space, clearing a hundred feet of vegetation, and how to prepare your home and community for the threat of wildfire. Ninety-five percent of wildfires are sparked by the activity of people, which means that almost all fires are preventable. One of the leading causes of wildfire is outdoor-powered equipment. When you use equipment, use it before ten a.m. and never on hot and windy days. When clearing dead or dying grass, don't use a lawn mower or weed trimmer with a metal blade. For more information, please go to the Temecula City Fire website. Thank you. End of report.
Thank you. And I notice around town, everybody's clearing weeds. You can hear it all over town, so.
Yeah, it's going to change probably overnight for us.
Yeah, it's good that you got that message out.
Thank you.
Okey-dokey. Lisa, did you want to add anything, Chief?
Actually, I wanted to add, I wanted to invite everyone to come out on Sunday for our Special Olympics torch run.
Awesome.
So we'll be at, starting at Pachanga and running down here to Old Town where the athletes will be joining us, and then from there, we're going to be running to Wilson Creek. And this year, Sheriff Bianca will be joining us, so it should be fun.
About what time would that be?
Starts at two o'clock.
In the afternoon at Pachanga?
Correct.
Or down here in Old Town?
Two o'clock, Pachanga.
And how, when would they be down here, do you think?
Probably, depends on how long the ceremony goes at Pachanga, but I would say probably about three-thirty.
Okay, sounds real good. That's a great program. Thanks for telling us. Okay, City Manager?
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, you sure?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, we had no reportable actions from closed session tonight.
Well, now is the time and point in our meeting where we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, we are adjourned.